This board of trustees meeting is now fully open. First agenda item is the introduction of new college employees. Adam, you have any new college employees? Yes, Gary, we do have several new college employees. We'll start with Martin.
I don't know if they're in the audience and I don't see them here now at the Zoom. But I'd like to introduce two longtime Olympic College employees in new positions that they started on February 16th, 2023. Dr. Teresa McDermott and Elaine Williams Bryant. Each of, well, Dr. McDermott and Ms. Williams Bryant have been with Olympic College for combined 55 years, working in that time in a variety of roles. For Teresa, those roles include the Kindred Shelter Campus Director, Director of the Career Center, and Associate Dean of Transitional Studies, among other positions. And Transitional Studies where students can earn their high school diplomas, learn English as a second language, and build the skills needed to succeed in college or in class. Elaine has also served previously as Associate Dean of Transitional Studies, been called a belt education, as well as interim Vice President of Student Services and Dean of Student Development. Within our instructional division, I've been working on aligning our academic division structure with our guided pathways clusters. The formation of the healthcare division in the fall with Dr. Alicia Nye as Dean of that division was part of that restructuring. Now I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Teresa McDermott as Dean of Business Technology and Transitional Studies. Her program mix will include our Business Transfer Program, Business Management, Business and Accounting Technology, and Organizational Leadership and Resource Management, along with Culinary Arts and Computer Information Systems. Her division also has two bachelor's programs, VAS in Information Systems and VAS in Organizational Leadership and Technical Management. Dr. McDermott's division will continue to include Transitional Studies, and I'm happy to announce that Elaine Williams Bryant has accepted a position as Associate Dean of Transitional Studies, according to Dr. McDermott. Ms. Williams Bryant will supervise the areas of Basic Education for Adults, English for Speakers of Other Languages, High School Completion, and IBS, which stands for Integrated Basic Education and Skills Training. I'm grateful for Teresa and Elaine's deep institutional experience and excited for the expertise they will use in their respective areas in Olympic College.
Thank you. Congratulations to all. Next, we have the new fellows.
Hi, so I'm Anna. I'm Anna from the Welcome Center, and we have a new employee, and I wanted to introduce her. She is not here physically, but she is on Zoom. Her name is Jenna Elliott. She is a native of Pacific Northwest and a former OC Running Start student who went on to Casta State University in Fullerton and got her master's degree, or her bachelor's degree. And her first language is American Sign Language. She is the daughter of a deaf adult, and she has been able to use that skill at the Welcome Center with students. And we're thrilled to have her as part of our team. She's passionate about education. So I can't see her. I thought there would be a screaming, but Jenna, if you're there and want to say hi, that'd be great.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Wendy, for the introduction. It is nice to meet all of you. I've been at OC for a little over a month, and I love it a lot. The job is something that I'm very passionate about, and it's very nice to meet all of you. I'm so excited to join that team.
Welcome, Jenna.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dawn Weber.
Good evening. I'm Dawn Weber. I'm the Director of Advising, and I am very excited because we have three new student success coaches that started this academic year. We've been growing our advising team, and so I introduce our three coaches. It's all just in the back row. First, we have Geddy Simone, who started with us in the Advising Center on October 1st. Prior to that, Geddy was the Running Start Office, working as a customer service specialist at that office since September 2020. She came to us a lot of institutional knowledge and knowledge of our students. Prior to OC, Geddy had the background in law and community outreach and social media management, was an administrative aide with the Kitsap County Properties Office, and a legal aide at a law firm. In the Advising Center, our success coaches are all aligned based on the guided pathways. So Geddy is going to, is working with the Social Sciences and Humanities Program. He already has an active caseload going from working very hard on establishing that caseload. One of our biggest programs areas is Human Services and Psychology, Social Work. Our seventh year, the sort of professional counseling programs are very popular, and that's his pathway. So he has a background in psychology with a minor in Women's and Gender Studies. So he's a really great fit for working with those students. On the side, Geddy enjoys working on music and illustration projects, and also shows, and I've seen some of Geddy's handy work, the handbags. So this has brought a lot of energy to the team in October. Next is Samantha Andrews. Samantha started with OC on January 9th. She has a master's degree in elementary education and has been working as a middle school math and science teacher in Kitsap County for the past six years. Prior to that, she worked as a vocational, re- vocational counselor and case manager at that review. So those skills really are important here, working with a case management model in OC, the Advising Center. She will be working with our cross-tech firms, including business, computer information systems, manufacturing and technology. She grew up in Yakima, moved to Kitsap County about eight years ago. She has two children. Her oldest has just accepted to Washington State University Engineering Program, which is very exciting. She is also a photographer. She does all photography business. Sammy Rose Photography, and she specializes in portrait and standing photography. She does some people. Thank you, Samantha. And last, we have Yiyang Zhao. Yiyang started, Yiyang, what's her name? Started on January 17th. Graduated from University of Minnesota in December. Just rolled out to Birmingham in the middle of winter break, in the storm. Is a Bachelor of Science in Psychology with a neuro minor. And at the University of Minnesota, he worked almost his entire four years in the psychology undergraduate advising office, having that two years with a parrotizer. And in that office, over half of their students were transfers from community colleges. There's a lot of experience working with community college students. He will be advising in our STEM pathways, supporting engineering, math, pre-hol program. He was born in Beijing, China, and he moved to Pennsylvania for high school. He started his freshman year in the United States of San. He also does graphic design, video editing, and making flyers. He always puts those skills to good use in our office. And he's also private pilot. Has over 160 hours of flying time. So the team is amazing. You have to learn a lot in a very short amount of time in the Advising Center, and they've all just jumped straight in. They're really quick learners. They just do whatever is after them, and they're very enthusiastic. I'm really excited to have them here.
Dawn, here. I believe that is everyone.
I'm here for the trial. And she just told me about three minutes ago. I'm here because I was not prepared to do this. Well, that's what I thought, too, but then she said no, she decided to do it tonight, but she's not here. So we're just gonna go with that. I am here to, I'm sorry.
My name is Jenna Flager. I'm Dean of Romance Services at College. I am here to introduce Mrs. Sarah Baker. She is our new Assistant Director of Running Start. She previously worked at Washington State University as an machine shop clerk for Kitsap County. Actually, one of the first outreach people I met when I moved to Birmingham 15 years ago as outreach director at a college. And I used to see her all day then. And she said, no, for food, I'm gonna take her out. And she started her week as a running start as a part-time support coach, and then she moved over to full-time support coach, and then we filled her back as our Assistant Director of Running Start, which we're very excited about. She was a head school social studies teacher and varsity cheer coach. She recently completed her Master's in School Counseling and Career Counseling internship at local middle school in Birmingham High School. She has decided to transition to this new role. And she is the Running Start STEM Student Success Coach, and she's also going to be coordinating our Running Start outreach efforts now since she has been doing that for a while, too, in the local community for a while this year, or probably longer than that. And in free time, she says she's been giving a family service for her two children, Jack and your nephew. That is so. Please welcome.
Yeah, well, actually, for you, for everybody, I have two other people. I'm not sure if that's in the group at all.
They're not here, right? I just told them they weren't here, and then she went to do that back.
And I think I have one more of them, but it's the Dean Erica Poe.
Hello, all. Good evening. Erica Poe, Dean of Libraries, Tutoring, and College Success. And I am here with the great honor of introducing our fourth full-time tenure-track librarian, Caroline Evergreen. She joined us in November, moving from Georgia right before we got some snow. Caroline will be providing reference and instruction, and she will also be helping our Open Educational Resources team promote and support OER. Previously, Caroline was a Reference and Instruction Librarian at Georgia Highlands College. She has an MLIS from Valdosta State University and is pursuing an EDS in Instructional Design, Technology, and Media from University of West Georgia. In her free time, you can find her enjoying nature with her dogs by day, quilting by night, and relaxing with her family. So welcome.
Welcome.
And she's with us on Zoom.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the long welcome. I can see all of you guys. I know you can't see me. But I'm very excited to be here, and I am really excited to join Olympic College and just everyone I have already met just in my brief few months here. It's been wonderful. Everyone's been so kind and so welcoming. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Welcome, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you, Erica. All right. So on behalf of board of trustees, I want to welcome all of the new employees and people with new positions at Olympic College. You're welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but it is not required to leave. Before we go any further, the board of the委员会's due orders is leaving to end this by prioritizing senior-related action items. In order to do so, we will also move on public comments to the members of the community that you have the ability to comment on any potential board action prior to that action being taken. Do we have any public comments? Here, I can be next. We have two. First up, we have Karen Monde.
Hi, good evening. I'm Deb Monten, WPAA staff rep for Olympic College. Just want to give updates, everybody. There are legislative questions ongoing now in the meeting, and we have our lobbyists, or your UCOMs and four lobbyists, for Tamen Petrie, who is representing all our issues there. Workers all across the state as well as other WPAA members. We recently had two all-interviewings here at Olympic College in person. So it was very nice to be able to put some faces things that people have already seen on Zoom teams that were on the 16th and the 17th. Many, many issues that we members have carried over at the college. The list includes, but not limited to, desk guard, position reviews, department hold the organization, and impacts of those changes, and non-communication from administration to those affected employees until after the changes take place. The idea that the administrators will say to them that they cannot talk to them about the decisions that have been made, which I hope to look forward to working with, later relations and giving resources to inform them on the difference between information sharing and direct dealing, because of our clearly misunderstandings with the administration. I also look forward to working with them, I mean, with relations and human resources through the legal management process, to discuss issues that are upcoming, to really encourage them to teach folks, the administration supervisors, about our CDA, the WPAA CDA. There's a lot of turnover with those administrative positions, and unfortunately, they're causing a lot of consternation and issues with employees with not being aware of what they're supposed to do as far as the contract is concerned. Thank you, guys. Thanks for that.
Next, we have our division.
Hello, board of trustees. I'm going to pass. Can I approach? I'd like to. Thank you. Are you timing me in the right? Okay. Oh, yeah. Well, thank you, board of trustees, for asking to comment. My focus today is really on our faculty and the positive impact they're having on students, and in particular, the future of healthcare. And so I shared with you a letter I'd like to read out loud from actually the community member who was fortunate enough to have one of our students care for them while hospitalized. So this particular member of our community says, "Thank you for doing what appears to be an excellent job of preparing your student Dylan to work with the patients at St. Michael's Hospital in Sylva Del." "I spent a few days recently as a patient critical care unit and was lucky enough to be there while Dylan was on duty. As a patient, I found him to be caring, supportive, assertive when necessary, and very helpful. He made me feel like I mattered, and he was quick to respond when I asked for help. As a retired college faculty who worked in colleges located in Washington, Maryland, and Germany, and I want you and this fellow to know, the nursing program with Olympic College is doing an excellent job of preparing future healthcare professionals for this year. So I just want to highlight, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes, a lot of hard work, in particular in healthcare professions. And Katie Trichular happens to be the faculty member that I'm highlighting today as someone who is role modeling what it means to be a quality educator and certainly is mentoring the future of nursing. And it's not only just me as the administrator, but also the community members that are celebrating how important our faculty are to the future of our community. So thank you for letting me share. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing. So all the names explicitly, St. Michael's seems to attract. Nice to know we have a lot of OC people in the nursing area working there and doing their work. Thanks again. And all public comments. So we will now adjourn to a reflective session. The purpose of the executive session is to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant to public employment or to review the performance of the public employee to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation. The executive session will last for 15 minutes, after which time the unit will reconvene where the executive session will be extended. And so the board in person will go through. We will proceed to attach items, four through seven on the agenda. So action item four is to spend your status with Adrian Marlies.
The tenure committee recommends, and me and John Vaughn, President Marty Capeluzzi, and I concur that Adrian could use computer science faculty to grant his.
Do you have a motion?
I'll send you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do you grant tenure to Adrian Marlies? Do we have any discussion or questions? None? A motion has been made and seconded. Do you grant tenure to Adrian Marlies? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any? Motion carries. I want to congratulate you on behalf of Olympic College trustees. We look forward to seeing your future contributions to the college and community. Yeah, Dean Vaughn, Vaughn, the most of us, did you introduce our Adrian Marlies?
Good evening. Sorry, my Zoom decided to quit just as it was getting ready to come to this. It's really my pleasure to get a chance to introduce you further to Dr. Adrian Marlies. We really appreciate having had him here these last almost three years. He received his bachelor's in computer science from the University of Texas at El Paso, and then went on to work as an intern as a software developer for both State Farm Insurance and ExxonMobil. He then went on to earn his PhD from the University of Texas at El Paso in 2020, just before starting here at Olympic College, and did some really interesting research on how user programs can implicitly determine their total memory usage. He also has a really interesting record of volunteering to teach computer science to high school students, and he took part when he was in El Paso in the Microsoft Philanthropies TILS program. And that certainly was really appealing. Even before he arrived here, he was already contacting Birmingham High School about the possibility of doing something similar to that here in Birmingham, showing you the interest that he has in outreach and especially with working with educating high school students as well as, of course, our Olympic College students. During his time here, he also has been very helpful in working with Washington State University to develop a course in digital logic and supported their electrical engineering program that they offer here in partnership with us. And so we're really pleased to have Adrian here, and I want to congratulate him on being awarded tenure. Excuse me.
Thank you. No, it's, I think I'll, they're, they're, I'm doing my job, especially transitioning from our, and I imagine that's on computer or the medical market. And computer science is all about order, that's how we shake up here, especially if there's an asset in front of you. Yeah, no, computer science. And we look to see if we can expand the program on the more advanced courses, and perhaps we can afford you to be a, yeah, looking forward to it. And you don't start it very soon. Thank you.
The tenure committee recommends, and me and Alicia Nye, President Marty Capeluzzi, and I concur that Ashley Wong, Medical Assisting Faculty.
Do we have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion.
Okay, a motion is made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Motion has been made and seconded and grant tenure to Ashley Wong. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Motion. I'd like to congratulate you on the path of success. We look forward to seeing the future contributions to the college and community. Any relation, by the way?
We have, uh, me and Alicia Nye, the, introduce Ashley Wong.
It's my privilege and honor to introduce Ashley as a tenured biofaculty. She has, I'll just start with a little bit of history. She has a master's and bachelor's in nursing from Western Governor's University, and her associate's degree nursing from Olympic College. That wants to be one of my own students. Prior to tenure, Ashley was an actual faculty for the medical assistance program since 2019. So she already sort of stepped her toe into it. She has been committed in developing her craft as an educator by attending the Tilt Method that we use. She also went to a boot camp, or they call it a mare, but it's the accrediting body for medical assisting. Probably saw the writing on the wall, but that would be important for her. She also has been improving herself by attending the Quality Matters courses. And she, a little bit of background of industry. She has worked as a nurse in home health, medical surgical telemetry, and long-term care, which is a wealth of experience that she offers. She has supported the meta-program as program coordinator at the start of her tenure. So not only did she have to develop herself as faculty during this process, but she also led the program. During this time, she's become a registered medical assistant, so that's an addition. She's a registered nurse, and she thought for credibility of her leading this program, she should take that national exam, and so she did that on her own. She has been the primary instructor for the meta-courses and mentored and supported students as they develop their skills and knowledge for their careers as a medical assistant. She advises, cheerleads, and role models students in achieving their dream, no, intended, of entering the medical assistant program. Which I do want to say, excuse me, there's no dreams, we just came back from that conference. Her students are really about achieving the dream. Those students are very marginalized and vulnerable. It's a very vulnerable population. So she is a gift to those students. She's currently leading the accreditation process for meta, all while living in this role of being a faculty member. Here's a quote from one of the students. "Today I realized," and believe it or not, as I was reviewing this, it's actually one of our students that wasn't successful in our program. So this is in our nursing program. So this is how it translates to achieving the creative pathways, getting students back on pathways. She actually was one of the accomplishments. So this is a student, quote from that. "Today I realized that if it was not for you contacting me first to enroll in the medical assistance program, I would not have. The day I got to have a real job, my life got better. Thank you from the bottom of my little heart. If it was not for you, I would still not know what to do with my life. I got to use all the skills that I learned at school here. I'm so proud of myself." Another quote, "I learned so many things because of you, Ashley, because of your patience, kindness, and then support, and most of all, you make learning fun." Cool, 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 cool. I got to serve her, so. I learned, I don't have to be perfect, but it's okay to try. I learned not to be so hard on myself. I learned trying hard is always best, even if it doesn't feel perfection. Thank you. I am honored.
Yeah. I'm super, super excited, especially since I'm a graduate. And I'll see, it's awesome to see the students who are coming here and growing. A lot of our student population, as we said, in Morgan hours, we have a lot of military spouses that are trying to get, you know, one year of college so that they can have a career, they move with their spouse. We have a lot of students that We have a lot of students that are low income and need a job right away. They can't do the nursing program right now. And I'm so, so excited to help them get a career that they love and show them my love for healthcare. So I'm excited to keep building this program.
The tenure committee recommends and me and Alicia Knight, President Marty Cavalluzzi and I concur that David Arden, your nursing faculty, granted.
Okay, do we have a motion? Grant tenure to David Arden.
I'm listening.
Anything? What's that?
Thank you.
A motion has been made and seconded to grant tenure to David Arden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. I'd like to congratulate you on behalf of Olympic College Trustee. We look forward to seeing your future contributions to the college and community.
Back again. What are the things I want to say before I start with Dave? This is amazing. As I mentioned, knowledge in Ashley Wong's process, her committee, and the commitment of her committee, the Chair Barbara Parker, Bonnie Adams, and Susie Cook, as well as Deborah Land, as a facilitator of Ashley Wong's. I don't want to go without recognizing your support in Ashley Wong's tenure process. Thank you for letting me do that. Now, I'm going to start with Dave. So Dave, I'm going to quickly acknowledge his committee. Alison Wareham, who is in chair, is from nursing. Eva Kemble, who's part of mesh. Virginia White, who's part of nursing, and then the facilitator, Susie Cook. Again, this all supporting Dave in this process. So let me, let me give you some accolades of Dave. So Dave started his tenure, of course, in the fall of 2020. He has a master's in nursing from the University of Washington. Should I say, go Huskies? It's a good number, there, so. Also, he has his DSN and his APM from Olympic College, that's where he's home from. His experience as an adjunct faculty for Olympic College began actually in 2013, so he's been part of us for quite a while. He's been an asset to the tenure process as well as understanding the culture of Olympic College as a graduate of the APM program in 1998, nineteen year. His experience as an ICU nurse, nurse manager, and leader on multiple system and department committees at various healthcare systems is a benefit to our programs, because he's a leader already built in. His highlights of his career in industry includes winning the American Association of Critical Care Nurses Gold Level Award in 2019. Really proud of you for that. In his first year of tenure, I asked him to take on a pretty big challenge. I'm just going to be transparent. It was probably the most difficult clinical course to ask of him in his first quarter, to, of course, coordinate, supporting new adjunct faculty in the course and learning himself actually how to coordinate multiple clinical sites, six instructors, and seventy students. He did that with courage and pride and worked through all of the bugs. It was a lot, it was good. He also has taught the practical nursing program and in the APM program. In his first two years of tenure, he has led faculty in the PM program, supporting the student governance of the two PM cohorts. One of Dave's greatest gifts, in my opinion, is his ability to connect with students. And meet them where they're at. Bottom line is, he meets them where they're at. Dave teaches the foundation of physical assessment skills. And this is key to success as a nurse. You have to have great physical assessment skills. His expertise as a nurse in critical care and exceptional teaching and learning skills has trickled down to continuity in our physical assessment student expectations from quarter to quarter. A comment from the student is, "My favorite class. I look forward to learning from Professor Arden every week, and I wish I got to have him as a professor next quarter." I can't clone him, sorry. Dave has grown over the last three years and used feedback from students, peers, and me as the administrator to professionally develop. To support his expertise as faculty member, this is the key thing about Dave, is he has successfully passed the certification for nurse education. He is a certified nurse educator, which I would expect him to do during his tenure process. I'm very proud of him for that. Olympic College is fortunate to have quality and dedication Dave provides in his role as nursing faculty. He is a number one student center and at the same time has high expectations. He runs the next generation of nurses. I am honored to work with Dave.
I want to thank Dr. Knight and the whole team, the nursing program. They've been super supportive of me in the whole, through this whole process. And there was a lot more to it than I realized when I first signed on about the journey. Yeah, it's one of these, you can find it. This tenure process has helped me quite a bit and I really appreciate the way I've grown. They have been my inspiration. My grandma, so just to come back to school, what I did, and make it through here. She, she actually got a degree in journalism writing here in the seventies and she was already, late sixties, so that's my, my legacy. My kid, my youngest is starting school here in the fall. Just very proud of you here.
Hey, we have one more.
We have three more.
Yeah, one more tenure-related item is reemployment of probationary academic employees.
Chair, the tenure committees recommend and President Cavalluzzi and I concur that the attached list of probationary tenure faculty be reemployed during the 2023, 2024 academic year.
And do, uh, we have a motion? Okay. We have a motion to approve the reemployment of enlisted probationary academic employees for the 23, 24 academic year. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or question? The motion has been made and seconded to approve the reemployment of enlisted probationary academic employees for the 23, 24 academic year. All in favor?
Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Motion carries. Thank you, Marty. We will now resume our agenda as the meeting. We think we're moving into our survey session tonight. We have Rich London, CTC Link Director, and Jill, sorry, Rosie. Business Systems Analyst, running on CTC. And what we have, which is to, because we want to take the diversity for them, but about three and four.
All right, thank you, Adam. I'm Rich London, CTC Link Director, and we're going to talk today about where we're at with CTC. I'm going to talk a little bit about business process management, where we're at with our business processes. And I want to spend just a few minutes talking about CTC link governance, which is becoming kind of an important subject now. Now that we're at this phase of the project, then I'm going to turn it over to Jill. She's going to talk about some running financial process improvements stuff that we're working on. Okay, thanks, Adam. So these are about these sixty business processes that have been part of the scope of this project is to get, you know, when I used to come report out several years ago, we were getting ready and all those activities. Before going live, we were everything on training, everything on business process, pit gap sessions, user acceptance testing, going through all those activities. It was this group of sixty business processes that we got into that process. So you see they're split up by pillar, human capital, the management, capital solutions, the lineup. So these are the sixty, roughly sixty business processes that will be transitioned from those legacy systems to CTC. Okay? So since we've gone live, we have tried to move as many processes as we can to the right. So many of these are planned in intermediation. Especially those in finance and some in HR. So we move these business processes into benefits, which is where you want all of that. It takes a lot of effort. It doesn't happen just by turning the system. So we've had subject matter experts, pillar leads, we're putting in hundreds and hundreds of hours to move these business processes and basically to the right. So the way we define these is remediation. If the business process is determined to be still interremediation by the subject matter experts. It's having significant issues, it's not achieving consistent results. If it's stable, we're getting consistent results, the output serving predictable, but it may not yet be efficient. And we just added a new one. They include work routes outside of CTC. Particularly in finance, where we have to take information, put it into a spreadsheet, work it, and then put it back within the system. Benefit realization is where we want to be, that's when you get these process efficiency achieved the benefits that we documented before implementation during all those common process workshops, the change impact analysis workshops. So to move these processes from left to right, we use remediation workshops and tickets to state board, especially for things that are in remediation. We've had hundreds of remediation workshops here, both of them. And we've submitted thousands of tickets to state board. Once a process is up and has stable range, then we use local benefits realization workshops, and that's what Jill's going to tell you more about today. And enhancement requests to state board. Some things work and they're stable, but they really could work much better if the system was enhanced. And so we'll talk more about this in the next slide. Thanks, Adam. So these are all the enhancement requests that, this is where the action is now on CTC. Is the colleges are all starting to recognize areas where it works, but it needs to work. So you can see a total of one hundred and fifty-one events submitted, thirty-nine are field pending, eleven approved, nine that deployed, eighty-nine approved and deployed, and twelve canceled. So it's a pretty impressive number, actually, that they have deployed ninety of these. So we put these metrics together. You know, we all have a sort of a more negative view of this, but they're actually not doing too bad. And you can see how they're split. You would expect most of them to come from the end of solutions. Okay? So this last slide that I'd like to go through and I'll turn it over to Jill, but this is what the CTC link governance looks like now. Now, I'm a member of the college collaboration group on the lab. There's roughly, you know, at a typical meeting, there's around close to a hundred people from the thirty-fourth college. So we take things like the enhancement request, we pick them around, sometimes Jill has come to present an act group on one we submitted. The problem is, we don't, it doesn't have any voting authority. So we can recommend, but that's as far as it goes. If we do recommend, and it goes up to the working group, where we don't have representation on that particular group. There are several colleges and several state board members, but it's not what you would call democratic because every college doesn't get to vote. And then immediately it goes up to the stack strategic technology advisory committee. We do have reps there, Dr. Tagas on that committee. And so we do have a voting member. So I noticed the two problems on the left, the two issues that are beginning to materialize now. Prioritizing enhancement requests. You know, how do we, how do we get ours prioritized so they move through? And CTC is struggling with this too. We ran our data pathways survey, what was it, two weeks ago? State board leadership was saying, hey, we're, we're struggling with this too. How do we prioritize all these requests? And they know there's a lot like that. The other problem is, one of the functionalities only used by one or two colleges. The way this works over in the collaboration group, we take a vote. And for example, there's only three or four colleges that are using student work in CTC. Like, we're one of those colleges. So we voted on that. It'd be four to approve, and either thirty would stay or they would go against it because they're not using, it doesn't have higher priority. And Marty did a really nice job explaining that to state board last week or the week before on the initiative Jill's going to talk about. So, uh, we'd like to come back in a couple of months with a recommendation on how we should change the whole governance process. So, uh, Dr. Tag and I have been discussing or working on it. When we come up with some ideas, which Jill will take it, Dr. Cavalluzzi, then we'd like to bring it here in your expedition. Any questions?
So who are the main players in the tenure committee? Did we have a Dr. Tag about what? Are these other colleges or are these state board people?
So the, the working group has, I think, seven colleges represented and, and like five or six members from state board. But, but concur that one of the other problems is that it's sort of the same group all the way from the working group, that the people that are co-chairing the college collaboration group are members of working with. And it's a very prone state board approach. What we're looking for is somebody to be an advocate for the college, and so far we're not seeing that. Okay, I'll turn it over to Jill.
My name is Jill Throesey Sid. I work with Rich on the CTC Link Business Systems Analyst. And I'd say probably half of my job is doing production support for the system. And the other half, I get really excited about, is about process improvement. So today I'm going to talk a little bit about some process improvements that we've seen since we went live, as well as where we're going to go in the future. And then it's going to outline how we go through kind of improving our processes. So the slide that you see in front of you, this actually takes you through the student lifecycle. So on the very bottom, you'll see kind of the typical timeline of students' journey at OC. Prior to CTC link go live, we had eleven separate systems that a student would need to log into to use, remember credentials, et cetera, to get through school. One thing that I think we should celebrate is now we have a total of five systems that students are using to navigate through school. And we have the potential to have only three systems. CTC Link has kind of enveloped six processes. And then you see on the very right-hand side, Calendly and MS355 forums, those are, those are kind of areas that we're working to improve our processes. Okay. Now, kind of shifting gears a little bit, about process improvement. I think we've been talking about that at pathways, I've heard it several times during the discussion today. And we were trying to do, king, your idea of how are we going to leverage CTC then to support that at pathways? That pathways, I'm sorry, CTC Link does have some people academic planner. And it provides academic advisory reports to students that shows them what requirements that they have yet to complete, what requirements they completed, and what requirements are in progress. It allows students to plan their time at OC by placing. It allows students to plan their time at OC by placing individually classes into terms. Those shortcomings that we are finding through discussions with advisors and other folks around the campus is that the planner does not allow students to see their entire progress through their, their, their journey here at OC. They click a bunch of boxes, they can't expand their whole planner at once, so they don't really have that pathway. They, they can't see themselves like walking through their, their journey. And then students don't get awarded if they plan a class for which they don't have prerequisites, or if they plan a class that's never, that isn't taught in that particular term. So we've got to start to find solutions to these several, to these shortcomings. So move to the next slide. And we look to one of our partners, we look to High Point, which is currently our partner. They provide us the student experience module in CTC link. So when students log on to CTC link, they, through the student homepage, it actually takes them to High Point. The students don't understand this. It looks like OC, it's branded like OC, and it just has a really nice student, user-friendly dashboard. And so we, we went to High Point to see how they can help us through guided pathways. They have this product called Degree Planner, and this addresses all the shortcomings that I talked about in the previous slide. But one thing that I love about it is it readjusts the planner if students don't enroll to find requirements, or perhaps the students fail. Right now, that's a manual process that requires students to go in, be proactive, and make that change. The High Point Degree Planner does that for them. It shuffles them around, and it also takes look, it, it takes a look at the prerequisites. So it's going to shuffle those courses around, but it's going to shuffle them in a way that the student, number one, can have those prerequisites. Number two is going to put those classes that are shuffled into terms of the classes typically offer. The benefit of using High Point is it's a, it's an add-on, it's not a third-party integration. So High Point sits inside CTC link, and it, the, the data is shared in real time. So that's one of the benefits of using High Point as opposed to something else. The next slide. So just sort of some other highlights of the Degree Planner. It creates automatic sequencing. So one of the shortcomings was that students have to individually move classes per quarter into their planner. And this takes about an hour for a student to do this. Degree Planner has automatic sequencing, so it uses data that we've already configured in CTC link to read those requirements, and it also uses our guided pathways maps that we've created to create the ideal schedule with the students. Students can then move those classes around, they can work with their advisor to see how a part-time schedule will look. And so I think that that automatic sequencing and making it easier for students to plan their time here is fantastic. And that allows for a dynamic and personalized pathway. And again, it also allows the students to check those prerequisites and to see what is offered. You see the next slide? One thing that I also love about High Point is that they have analytics. So they, they can take those classes that students have in their planner, and they give us, of course, the manual order. So you can see on the left, anything that's moved that, that fell through the line, that means we have, or this is the example, that means we have fewer seats available than we had in demand. And so this really helps instruction plan appropriately. One other thing is you might find you have a kind of a one-off, a student might have planned a class, and you might only have a demand for one, so for one person in a particular term. So you can do proactive outreach to that one student. They can be identified on this report, and you can do the proactive outreach, maybe have that student change, change that class in another year. And it also provides this nice graduation statistic as well, predictive graduation statistic there. The next slide. There are a couple other products for High, High Point I wanted to also highlight. Planner is kind of the core. There are some supporting products, and the second, but it's a schedule builder. This allows students to take the classes that are in their planner, and the system, High Point's Schedule Builder, will give them any variation of schedules. The beauty of this is students can put in their availability. Let's say they have childcare issues, so they're, they're only available from eight to ten, or one of their kids are at school, ten, ten to two. They can put in their time if they're available, and the schedule builder will give them a schedule based upon their availability. That takes students a lot of time typically to try to fix, fix their classes that aren't under schedule. One thing I also, the also highlight here is High Point saves that availability. So for instance, we can go back and find, okay, in the fall, did any, did, how many people wanted to have classes or, or couldn't, excuse me, couldn't have classes, say, on Friday morning? We had, so was everyone putting in, say, for instance, that they don't want Friday morning classes? Maybe look at that retrospectively and kind of adjust our schedule going forward. If you have no one available, you know, from eight to nine, maybe we want to start, you know, a certain class at nine. So those, those, those analytics really can help, I said, with the guided pathways. Next slide. The, the last one I want to talk about is advisory relationship management, and this is kind of an advisory outreach program that High Point offered. And what's different about this than the advisory, the advisor knows within CTC link is this quickly allows advisors to filter their student populations. So advisors can put in any number of optional filters, and they say, hey, give me a list of all my students who received any grade below two point oh last quarter. And then they can target specifically communications in that group of students, or, you know, they can say, hey, give me my students that got four point oh this last quarter. I want to, I want to target them and say, you know, good job. So the, the advisory relationship management system, it allows for that, that really targeting communications to keep our students on track. One, one other thing about the advisory relationship management system is it allows for scheduling of appointments, and that's not just for advising. So if students need to schedule appointments, say, with financial aid or other offices around the campus, those are all kept in the advisory relationship management system. And the benefit of using these systems in, in, is that they all are on the students' main dashboard when they log into CTC link. They're going to see their appointments, they're going to see what classes they have to schedule. So all of these things are, are just kind of working towards increasing the student experience or making a more user-friendly experience. Okay. So I just kind of wanted to shift here a little bit. Are there any questions about High Point?
Yeah, are these active right now? There's a new.
So, no, High Point, actually, thank you for the question. I have something that we would like to start implementing. We are working on getting like a group pricing for all the things that we want to implement, and then we need to get approval from state board to implement High Point. So like I said, because it sits inside CTC link, we have to have their approval to kind of put it into the system. We talked to other schools, and no one else is using High Point, but we don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. We think that we want to just make, we want to lead the way, as Rich was saying with Marty, and we want to kind of show the other schools, like, this, we can do this without a third-party system, without a third-party integration. Great. So we just wanted to talk about, we just talked about how we do, how we do benefit realization, and we do that through work, and we have a process that we're being, we've been using, which is mentor-based process mapping. And this kind of, it could take traditional business process mapping, and it could take the technology. So you go ahead and you map, and you map your process as you normally would, and during the second pass, you're going to add some metrics for each step. So unlike, unlike traditional process mapping where it just seems so much shorter, we're actually looking at our, our inputs and outputs, and then we're looking for things like percent after incomplete, we're looking for time spent, like hands-on time spent, as well as lead time, which is the time that something was in someone's inbox. And then when we're done with that process, we then look at the math, and we decide what activities are value-addying, what are necessary and what are not, and what are not necessary. And those not necessary categories, we know that by that, those are what we, those are what we target in the process for waste. So we, so we wanted to go ahead and notice the waste, we wanted to do a group clause analysis, and then design the future state countermeasures to improve the process going forward. Next slide. So we did this with a process that rooted in Lean Six Sigma methodology. Just really quickly, we defined the problem when we, and we found it, and we used, to divide the problem, we use the business mapping. We measured the current performance standards and where to set our goals for the future. We analyzed the root clause, we have an improvement slash implementation in the process that we do, and then we did the control, where we make adjustments in the processes, ensure goals are being met, and we specifically target some, you know, key performance indicators for this particular process. Next slide. So I just kind of wanted to show you what this looks like in action. So we, this is an example from financial aid. We were asked by Dr. Glaser to take a look at our financial aid process from the time the student's fast inter, information is uploaded into CTC link to the time the student gets rewarded. So you can see it starts out kind of messy in a workshop, and then we take that workshop material, and then we put it into that kind of nice little neat product that you see on the right-hand side, and that's the, the defined state. Remember, we're looking for those pain points. Next slide. And the next thing we're going to do is we're going to measure. So we're looking at those pain points, we can pull data out of CTC link that will give us, instead of just a hunch that things are, things are maybe eighty-five percent accurate or eighty-five percent complete, we can pull some data out of CTC link to see where we are right now. That establishes our baseline, and then from this baseline, we can then improve our process. Next slide. So for this, for this particular example, our problem statement was students are taking longer than expected to fulfill F A applications. So through the group clause analysis, we realized it was a communication, a communication issue, and so we focused our implementation for this particular problem on communications. And the notice that we have, you, you get the countermeasure, sorry. So we don't have solutions, and the reason why we don't use the word solution is because we want to be kind of continuous, a, a organization of continuous improvement. So we don't want to just say this is the solution and then stop there. We call these countermeasures because we're, we're trying to improve the process, then we're going to check the process to make sure it's working right. And then, you know, even after we check it, we're going to still look at it again to make, to see if we can do any other improvements. Next slide. So this is an example of the implementation plan that we do during the workshop with the people doing the work, and I think that's another important process, an important process here. So the people doing the work define what activities are going to get them to their desired state. Activity and responsibility, and then the dates, and this is kind of, we'll do a chart later. So the dates and course-specific deliverables are, are worked out through a separate workshop. So we have the implementation plan, and next. And then again, this is our control. So these measures of success, again, come from the SMEs or, and anyone who's in the workshop, and so the measures of control that we use for financial aid, they want to increase their checklist completion time. And so just a checklist is, you know, a student performs, fulfills their FASB, and financially says, okay, you need to now do X, Y, and Z before we process. So we want to look at checklist completion time to see if our process is, is indeed speeding that up. And then just the checklist completion percentage, how many of our students are, let's name it, how many of our students know about these checklists, and how many have interaction with them? And then overall, that we want to look to see is we're improving from the time that ICER is uploaded, which is that FASB data, to the time the student is packaged and awarded. So these are measures of control that we will look at and we'll come back to as well. So, so like I said, six, six Lean Six Sigma is not an end process. You just keep, keep doing it over again until you find your processes to make this work. Any questions? Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
There's another question. Do you want to turn, go back where we started, the hierarchy of decision makers? You said that there are issues now with the authority, that he does that. I think we made it that there were changes, and you've elaborated a bit on that.
Well, the State Board is searching for a way to prioritize all these plans, and they mentioned it to us in that survey two weeks ago. So that told me that they don't have this, you know, that they're not rigid in this particular We here, and a few of the other colleges have determined that this is going to work. We think about it, the example we gave on student marketing, you know, we're one of the four commissioners for the college using it. So, you know, how do we get that all the way up to the top? So what we're kind of leaning towards recommending is, you know, prior to Go Live, we used common process workshops, and we facilitated those mostly down with, and, and they were a good response. We have, you know, thirty colleges show up, and we developed a process that was more common across the colleges, and even as, you know, with ERP, you can't work thirty-four different ways, it just can't. And so we, we're kind of leaning towards a recommendation to, you know, that's probably going to recommend something like that, where when there's an enhancement request, we would take the two or three from that area that, that are similar, and then run that through something like a common process workshop, where we would get all the colleges together and, you know, develop an assessment of that, and then prioritize.
Think about writing. I mean, getting, uh, serious, then you come up with some monetary areas that, that force through, we, we clearly want that we're going to be able to do that, that's what the issue is. It's just a matter of how they allocate labor.
And I think that's the other big thing to consider. So what we'd like to do is come back in a couple of months with what we're aiming now for maintenance, and then we'd like to show you the org chart, which they, some of us think that it's a little too heavy on what used to be production support, and they actually need more developers. And, you know, with that many enhancement requests, they have probably twenty-five people still. So we'll leave that part of the recommendation.
We're behind you.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Right here. Is that?
We're done. Any more questions?
Okay. We're done. All right. Good. We're done. All right. Yeah. And again, thanks to Rich and Jill, it was great, great, but there's a lot of, a lot of complexity there, but this is a big, big project, and a lot of work to do. So moving on, next we have a new section on our agenda that we noticed titled, "The Board of Trustees Keep Business," and the goal of this section is to enhance the reporting outcomes like the Board of Trustees did, specifically in relation to various subcommittees that have been reported in the process that we're forming, and will be presented a couple of these tonight. But before we move into committee reports, do any of the trustees have something to report?
You know, I, I do. I just want to say that I was honored to be able to represent the college at the 2023 National Legislature Summit. It was sixty-four of Washington State, some colleges, employees, faculty, and trustees that attended, and we were well represented, represented. And also, we got an opportunity to meet with a lot of our legislators, Senator Marie Cantwell, Senator Murray, and also Congressman Barry Summer, and they spoke very highly of our community colleges, and I'm hoping that in the future, things will be better for us. And so we actually presented our legislative priorities, and they accepted them very well. The students from Tacoma, they did an excellent job presenting their colleges, and I hope that next year, we'll be able to take some of our comments to that group, thank you. And also, I told Congressman Kilmer, he had flags under the college, and I did not see Olympic college flag in the college, and I'm going to send him three.
Yeah, I heard one of the major tailways from Senator Cantwell's office is when she was asked, what can the trustees do for her? She said, spend the money. And everybody, of course, goes, oh my God, what do you mean? And she talked about massive amounts of money, a billion dollars, that are allocated for higher education that nobody's working. And so she's saying, get your grant writers working. And so anyway, we're going to do some follow-up with Phil Harlais on the. And so anyway, we're going to read some follow-up with Colonel Heisenberg on the other colleges. Maybe a college has collaborated, one college has, those funding the grant. Don't really hear about Senator Cantwell spending money.
We're understanding.
That's right. Okay. Trustee Goldman.
Yes, yes, trustee Ekman. I want to say that I'm very proud to say that I did have an opportunity to be able to attend the 2023 Winter Conference on January twenty-third and also the twenty-fourth in Olympia. And I attended the new trustee orientation, which was very insightful and very informative. Was able to gain, you know, gain a lot of insight, trying to make different connections. And also able to know that Olympic College faced some of the same challenges many other different colleges face as well. And so I did attend that one. Also, last week, February the fourteenth through February the seventeenth, attended the Achieve the Dream in Chicago several other faculty members and really had a good opportunity to be able to learn, you know, learn and spend time with each other. And I want to, want to say thank you so very much to Dr. Marty Cavalluzzi for keeping us connected with Achieving the Dream. I think it's a very, very help, something that's very helpful to bring success to many of our students. Attended many different sessions. But one of the things that stood out, I guess, for me the most is that I think on Thursday, there was a young man who was one of the Achieving the Dream scholars. And he really stressed the importance of having just faculty that really cares. I think when we, as a college, when we have faculty that really show our students we care, not only to show them, not only tell them, but also show them we care, I think it goes a long way. And whenever one student becomes successful, we all become successful. And I want to say to all of our faculty members that I really appreciate the hard work. I know it's hard work. I really appreciate what you do for the, for the students because I've seen life being changed because of it. So thank you so very much for the opportunity to be able to, you know, go to Chicago and be a part of Achieving the Dream. So thank you so very much. That's all I have, trustee.
Thank you, trustee Goldman. And thank you for coming today. I know you had this medical procedure done today. It's very unpleasant and I didn't expect you actually to show up tonight. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think trustee Gonzalez is on tonight. So let me move on. I've got a few items to report. Just secondly, the comments on the legislative which we did down in Olympia. We had Pastor Coleman, we had Martin Cavalluzzi and Brett Hollinger representing student government. We met with Michelle Collier, Will Randall, Chris Bird, Drew Hanson, and Christine Roberts, who's very busy at the gym. And anyway, what we were presenting was the State Board of Practition to request a budget for the biggest one being for competition, for faculty staff, another for workforce education, and then some other, other smaller items here. This is where we go down and talk to the legislature and get them behind supporting community college student budget. And that gets matched up with the governor's budget. And the governor could support the budget, but he hasn't fully funded what we requested. So this is where we kind of get them pushed in the direction of fully funding. So anyway, that was good. And I think Brad is going to report a little later on subsequently. He tuned him up to show you. Let me see, some other, just four matters. We're going to have our spring retreat Friday of the holiday, Friday, March tenth. Still more panel location. We're going to talk about funding and current status of the budget, changes to the Open Public Meetings Act, board committee assignments, and go back and spend a little more time on our board and college role. Then at the ACT Spring Conference, we need to change the date of our main meeting. It's going to be five, May sixteenth, and we'd like to change it. I'd like to change it to May twenty-third. And so anyway, I'd like to check your calendars and let me know if that works for you. It actually is a work, there's four, I think four Tuesdays and five Tuesdays in May. So this actually puts it on May, not regular meeting. On our, we're going to start planning our summer board retreat. We'll set a time and date, location at our spring retreat. And that being the thing, I think we're going to focus, tend to plan tenure, performance review processes for the president and board, and then trustee recruitment and onboard. We've also got study sessions listed out. We have CTC link tonight, we're appreciative. In March, we tend to have, we're going to focus on updates to guided pathways and achieve dream programs. And also some special reports on success rates in gateway classes. I had a conversation with President Cavalluzzi today. Threw out some statistics that I think you need to get better, better familiar with. In April, we're going to do a Puget Sound Naval Shifter overview. Personally, I've been doing three years, but I feel I don't understand what's going on in the shipyard. So I'd like to learn more. I think the whole board has been a bit. And in May, we're going to talk about accreditation. We don't have anything in June, but it's number top day. So anyway, other board members, if you have things to do, really like more information on these, so please let us know. The finance committee, we're in the middle, I guess they're at the end of an accountability audit. And I talked to Ron Ellison today, and I guess we're coming close to finishing that up in a number of, a couple of weeks. We also talked about, I think Rich alluded to it, that, you know, we've taken a college each college and paying substantial fees to the state board for CTC link. And I think we're looking at what those fees are and how we're dealing with getting. Those other colleges started to question, you know, what those fees are used for. The last item I wanted to bring up for the trustees is I'm working with, I think Rich, you're taking the lead on this, that I'm working with Alan on the dashboard report. And what this is going to be is a, it's going to kind of encapsulate where we are in a lot of these projects. We had the Risha report out last month by David Ron. The online help for every, we need to keep that front center for what we're doing there. So part of this report, we'll have an update there. We'll have a continuing update on CTC link. We're going to have some financial, the standard financial information, where we are in enrollment. The notorious person working for a while from HR and regarding staffing. And I know the HR department's working on that. If we're going to see, seem like I can save a little better there and make that report easier to generate, but it will be ongoing forward. Four yards and reporting on what we're doing there. Innovation building, we had a report on a month or two ago. What is the status of that? What are we doing? We keep that up to date. And then there's a number of other components to this report. I don't know, can you give us an idea when you might see a, which approved version of that?
We're planning on this. So we're working on requirements definition right now. And Lind Geiser has that side, the golden side. And we've had one workshop to document the requirements for development side. And then Jill's been gathering the requirements for the content side. So we've got two halves to this thing, right? So we're working on requirements for both. And we're taking those requirements to executive team in March for approval. We're reviewing approval. So once they approve it, then those requirements will be allocated to a design back to Lynn. And they'll start building and we'll start fully getting funding.
Well, it's going to be, I'm very excited about getting this report. It's going to be, it's going to get a lot of visibility in the entire college about where we're placing the emphasis, what kind of progress we're making. And kind of what we're going to propose. We have so small of the agenda. I think we're going to be consenting items. So approval of the draft minutes in our January seventeenth meeting. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll say again.
A motion has been made in secondary to approve the draft minutes in January seventeen, twenty-three. Regular board trustee meeting as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other motions, motion period? Anyway, moving on to information and action items. Your events calendar.
Mr. Parryman, all trustees, items I would like to highlight. And we already mentioned that the ACT Spring Conference took place in Ola Ola on May fifteenth through sixteenth. We're going to start to take alternate board meetings. If you'd like to attend, please let me know, like, make your arrangements. Additionally, once we set that date in the new board meeting, we'll also lock in the date for the tenure reception that we do annually to celebrate those who receive tenure. So more information will be coming out on that. That will be looking the following week, the last week of May. Any questions about the upcoming event? Oh, one last thing. We are working with area legislators to bring them to campus for town halls. We have a couple of people right now that are finalizing dates because those are locked in. We'll make sure we're aware. During those visits, they will do their community forums. They also like to try to get into classrooms. And so if you reach out to faculty, you know, when they're going to be on campus, try to find appropriate classrooms.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, I think they're really excited about it.
Absolutely. Representative Hanson and Simmons cover the opportunity.
That's great. Okay, any other questions about the calendar? Next thing we need to have is a budget update for the month ending in September, twenty-two. I think Angela Hamilton will be presenting that in the studio.
Chair Ekman and the other board of trustees, we look forward to the upcoming dashboards. And I also would like to congratulate all the new tenure faculty. Last week, we met with the finance committee to discuss the cash on hand and the operating budget actuals for the period of December thirty-first. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I would just like to comment, I missed one of my earlier comments, but it's related to the budget. Now, there's a number of state initiatives that are across more than people legislating right now that have a significant impact on our budget. You know, we're already in the hole, but there's things like setting, increasing the minimum salary to qualify for extension points. All that work is said and done at the college year in form of that, we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars of impact cost to drive that. There's also and anyway, there's just, you know, in a time of a tight budget, you've got, you know, legislature is busy passing new initiatives and none of them are funded. So we've got to dig into our pockets if we're going to be able to do that. Okay, next time is twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fee requests. New and changing.
Thank you, Chair Ekman. I'm a member of the board of trustees. Presented for our first reading and for your review are the fee requests for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. I'd like to acknowledge that there are representatives here tonight from the various, with fee requests, and it's very important that you might have. To review very briefly, Student Services has two fee requests that they've submitted. The first is a change of the student services fee from two dollars to four dollars, a two dollar increase. And that's on a per credit basis. And that's to enhance student services to, I'm sorry, enhance services to students. The second fee that's been proposed is for proprietary services. That's actually already in place and has been in place for a number of years. They are requesting a five dollar increase from twenty-five dollars to thirty dollars. And that's on a per exam basis to maintain the self-supporting nature of the proprietary services. That was a late add, so I don't know if you saw that in your materials. But that's now on our list for approval next month. Instruction has, it looks like five fees that they are adding or that they are requesting changes for. The first is the parenting education course. And they are proposing to, you know, beat that fee. That was a fifteen dollar fee that was, I believe, charged on a per class basis. The next fee is a, actually, the next four fees are nursing fees. And these are new, new this year. The first is for clinical placement. It is a hundred dollar fee on a per placement basis. Second is the dirty exam, exam soft software fee of seventy-four dollars and ninety-two cents per exam. The third is a nursing lab fee. And that is a thirty-five dollar per lab course basis. And then finally, a nursing simulation fee of twenty dollars. And that's on a course using the same labs basis. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of these ones. Do you do nursing fees? Sorry. Do these represent new service or are these services we've been offering and the time we're capturing?
That's exactly it, the second one. When the Veterans LP and BSN program came about, I forgot about fees. And so we've been sort of, yeah, losing sort of out on that fee. And so finally, I'm getting that through. So it mirrors the other programs and the cost to that.
Okay, thank you. And then I have one question on student services fees. And maybe I'm ducing right here, but if we're talking about doubling our fees, then I know Brett's going to talk in the board about what they're doing to deal with the huge surplus, the serve that they have. Why are we ready to be like, oh, funny?
Heather, I believe, and I do, they're already sort of out there. Yeah, thank you.
Am I that prepared?
No, we like to be prepared. And so basically, they're two separate classes. So the fee is dedicated for salaries or stipends for coaches. And so because we're trying to have a livable wage and because we want to support students coming out of the pandemic, they need extra support. And so looking at this fee, we're needing to increase it so we don't need running it in bread and keeping all of these salaries and just stay them up to a livable competitive market.
No, true, I understand that, I appreciate that.
And I totally know, but it's a separate fee than what it's worth at the conference. So, yeah.
Thank you.
And just one additional note on that. This is a fee that was instituted more than a decade ago.
Yes, absolutely.
And not been increased for
Seven years.
Seven years. And so we are in a perpetual shift of touch. And even, it seems very drastic if you're looking at a doubling of a fee. But that fee has not been increased. And as you're saying, a lot of our obligations consist of guided pathways and increasing number of coaches. When we, at the beginning of the pandemic, when we started and we shifted to a professional staffing model for success coaches and the faculty advisors went back into instruction, we had about two hundred thousand dollars to staff and advise the center. And so we do have some guided pathways fund. So we have one point five million dollars from the state that is spread across student services, communications, and instruction. But what we're hoping to get out of this increase is additional coaches, best coaches for advising. But what we're hoping to get out of this increase is additional coaches, best coaches for advising and for others, students, of course. And like, uh, Dr. Pashon said, it's really focused on salaries. Um, and so, the, the longer we wait to increase these fees and to really catch up, we are actually, across the state, when we look at where we are, these were behind a lot. In fact, it's gonna be fairly impossible for us to catch up. Like, we're just, we will never catch up to where a lot of the other colleges are, because we had not increased our fees by what I would say is a reasonable, uh, pitch, like other colleges were. And so the train's off the station for a lot of, you know, fees where we should be, but and it does seem fairly drastic, and we understand what it's true to force, seems like a lot, but it still brings us to, I think, within a reasonable amount, given where a lot of the other colleges are.
And then you're going to plan to, well, the next several years to kind of bring this forward, very good with yours.
Yes, continuing to increase them in a reasonable, um, rate like other colleges, yes.
If you remember the article that Mayor Erickson shared, uh, showed the major increases, that we had the highest fees, that it wasn't the highest fees, we're trying to raise our fees in line with other colleges, so that's why it appeared, but that's how it was out.
Yes, right. And the article, right, it wasn't the highest fees, it was the larger fee rate. I mean, here we're doubling that, so yeah, that's kind of explaining to, you know, not a favorable narrative for us. But it's, in objectively speaking, the amount is still not as high as other colleges.
Especially, you know, you know, Art and I love those, like, we had that. Yeah, those love me, they're our forward. Share the love.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, well then, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees accept the FY twenty-three, twenty-four fee requests as an information item. Uh, these fee requests will return next month for a second reading and, uh, expected approval. Uh, um, Karen, I give.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to, uh, reports for the board, uh, here in government.
Can I say, can you do all the, uh?
Hello.
Hello. Okay, some updates since I was last here. Uh, the spin-down plan and the assessment that we did on the survey. So after reviewing the surveys, uh, the spin interest survey, or after reviewing it, uh, SJC found that out of the total five hundred and thirteen responses, uh, there are eighteen, uh, due kids. So that put us at, uh, a number of four ninety-five, slightly under our goal of five hundred. Um, but after assessing the data, SJC determined that OC students want to see campus way by any signs, uh, renovation of the locker rooms, uh, and building nine, and just different banners, uh, at least at campus way. Uh, we report SJC will need facilities, communications, city government, and, uh, and security to discuss pricing accessibility and contracting for these projects. Uh, I've already talked to Sean, and hopefully he'll be here soon, and we can start, uh, gain money for where we're going to place these maps around campus, and um, also talk to a few other people with regards to locker rooms, so excited about that. Uh, we plan to have a report for this, so in March. Um, next item, the SNA budget process for this upcoming year. Uh, so far the committee has met with ten requesters and has started the initial phase of deliberation. Committee is pleased with the success of the new set of questions given to funding wrestling entities next to, for any golf. Uh, the new set of questions, by more detailed holistic overview of the program's operations. Uh, the questions were inspired by championships, prioritizing academic programs and services. Uh, head of caution and lead Campbell, both Rosie Taylor, sponsors from the book, uh, uh, for, for non-academic programs. Um, so a club update since my last update, uh, the Native American Digidis Club and the Sustained Oi Club, uh, been chartered. Um, the last club conference meeting was held on February fourteenth, and, uh, next Purventon Club Fair will be on the twenty-third from eleven to one, and Bolsoho, uh, Club Fair will be on the twenty-eighth uh, from eleven to one as well. And then not listening to Sheldon, and, uh, there, the date times to be determined, but it'll be sometime next quarter, uh, for that. Um, so our day in, uh, month here. On January twenty-fourth, President Kavuzi, Chairman Ekman, trustee Coleman, and I tell them to speak some of our district representatives. I would force you up to meet with Senator Rawls, Randall, and Representative Callier, Hanson, Simmons, and Tor. Um, although very, uh, my first time in that, uh, in our name is very exciting, and, uh, I think, um, the knowledge gained in this fifteen minute session definitely helped, uh, Rosie, uh, Toby and I prepare, uh, for our CUS advocacy day of following week, um, for students, Olympic, uh, Olympic Hall of Fame. Really well. And then on to the CUS advocacy day, which is the Council of Union and Student Programs. On the first and second of February, Rosie Harper, Toby, Akten, and I attended the CUS advocacy day, and we'll deal with our advisor, Neil Campbell. We met with representatives, Callier, Hanson, Simmons, and advocated for bills, um, HDB one five five nine, and Senate one bill, which is five five six six, which I'm just gonna read the brief summary of those bills, and, which is basically institutions of higher education show each established student basic needs task force, comprises seven faculty, uh, student representatives, and community organizations with expertise, uh, accessing basic needs. Each task force shall have a vote, and we're going to be canvassing student plan for its campus beginning later than April first, uh, twenty twenty-four. Um, so with regards specifically to the Senate Bill five five six six, I've actually been in communication with each community college student president, and that one, uh, screw, we've been working very closely with Senator Randall on this. And, um, I think, um, Thursday I'll be hopefully meeting virtually with Senator Randall and her, and, uh, figuring out what we can do, uh, student government, uh, college should do to help advocate for that bill. Which I believe will be very important. And then ones that I have listed in the one page that I printed out, um, for hospital forces seventy that died in two thousand and nineteen, um, but that bill specifically, um, it was bad timing, uh, based on the time here and the legislative process, but, um, summary for that, basically, um, making higher education more affordable, uh, providing incentives for the use of open source structural materials, adding new sections, uh, to an, uh, already in place bill. So, um, like I said, it was a bad timing to try to advocate for that bill, but I think just putting it on the radar, and then, as well as going to the next SJC, I think preparing them to advocate for, uh, a reintroduction of that bill is very important.
Excellent, I think it's especially important to hear that, too. Sure, they, uh,
Exactly, yeah. And then, um, trustee Brian, I know that you mentioned that you were in DC, how about two, and you wanted see you up in college there, um, next month, we're actually, SJC is on DC to do that, and so hopefully you represent the school, uh, well. Very well. Right.
Here, there.
I'm excited to do that. Um, any questions?
You're doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
I, I heard this comment, that Brett did some great job, they're probably getting the college, we're already, no, we don't care about the front of the interview. They, they only what care about, you know, the, uh, the, the college, right?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, big job.
Thank you. Hello.
Okay, uh, moving on to, um, the Washington Public and Boyd Association Board of Trustees.
Chair Ekman, continue, you have, uh, an order down.
Good evening, trustees, thank you for this opportunity. Um, good evening, A. Was covered pretty much by what Jed Montez shared with you, uh, otherwise, that's really good. And what we've been presenting over the last few months, thank you.
Okay, any, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the, you're back on the second board.
So we have a few things to talk about tonight, um, I wanted to update you that I have on an hour, moving to the Barnes and Noble. Uh, so we have a little bit more specific information about what our concerns are related to that, so I think we had a I think maybe I want to say healthy discussion with your representative, um, and a long list of really good questions. So I think, I think some of our main concerns as the fee that they're proposing, with a per credit fee, uh, would it not be the most important part of the conference? It would not be something the college had input on for determination, Barnes and Noble could raise that number over that. They said that there was a formula, um, when I asked about it, she said, well, it's not really a formula. And that's not really the same way you should say to a math faculty member, you're like, you're house friends, it's a form of calculation. If you can't tell me what that is, it's very making me wonder where you bought that number, so that was concerning. Um, and the other thing that was concerning to us is it's a charge for many classes. So you either opt in, or you opt out for the whole of the quarter, whether your class uses an OER textbook. So you would pay a hundred dollars for that free text. One of the faculty members with the chemistry department asked if Barnes and Noble would be reimbursing. Um, so some textbooks are rated by a thing called Open Text, that has some names and stuff, and things like that. Um, they said no. So they persisted in an ask, well, you know, because you're making money off of something that someone else is paying for, because any textbook is only a textbook. Like somebody is aware of this, maybe. And she said, no, we're not making money off of that, and I said, well, um, it's almost a hundred dollars. And, um, and they are, I mean, they give money to textbook companies, and they're probably willing to publicly do things. So that was a big concern. Um, and then the fee would also make all of our classes, I would have complained with the R W about all of our classes. Um, so that's a problem. There have been other problems, um, that's I'll get to, but the other problem that, um, that we were unaware of prior to this is that the faculty member would determine the mode of delivery of a textbook for the whole class. So I would have to decide if the whole class was getting an ebook, or the whole class was getting a printed copy of the textbook. When we asked why that has to be the case, they said it was stopping issues, their, the birthday complete, their promises that a student will have all of their material on the birthday. Um, so they said in order to order them ahead of time, we have to know this. I said, well, there's a lot of reasons why a student might want a different version of a textbook, that also seems to be problematic accessibility wise, um, and there's a lot of students who live in places where the internet isn't the same, and it's like, for it is very unreliable, and we, we need to be, and and I live in a block from here, like, so that just was, was really concerning. Um, the other thing we're very concerned about is student privacy, and what information that Barnes and Noble would have access to. There are a lot of problems with Barnes and Noble's education division. Um, there's lawsuits about it, there are rules about who can apply. They seem very comprehensive with questions, and not prepared for any of that, which was interesting. Um, we're also concerned about this adding to a student's student loan debt, and the impact that this would have on the college's financial services often. Um, and how all that would work. The other thing that we're concerned about is the timelines for ordering. So what she said was that students would need to place their order thirty days before we start the quarter to guarantee that birthday. Um, they, I don't know, like, they don't register that, or, most, I mean, a lot of them, there's a lot of fluctuation, um, in that, so it seems to me that their name that they're promising there is not for whom they could deliver, and they also would need the faculty to make the decision, and they order fifty days before. Which, I don't know what people would do, though, if they sent back the numbers and already spent it in the class. Anyway, so there was a bunch of things concerned about that. So we're meeting with them again at the end of the week to see if they have any, these persons, but I highly doubt that we would change our opinion about this. So we made a couple of recommendations, there are a couple of schools to come that, and some others that have versions of their own bookstores, so we've asked to have presentations from them. Um, the people at, who, Edmonds have had a presentation from Paul, and, um, they were in, fairly impressed with that, and it addressed a lot of the concerns that we would be having. Um, especially the, the fee for an OER class, or if not, um, the following, or that. They're also outside your doubt from kind of a practice, so we have some time to decide if we want to do that or not. Um, so anyway, we want to ask our presentation team, so we are very similar ideas with conjunction. Um, but right now, our big concern is where do we go for tenure? So things we don't have answers to at this point is what is the timeline for making a decision? When do we need to make a final decision? What is the process? What other bookstores are we looking for, and when will we start to take the fee? Because I know that it might seem like it takes a long time to make this decision, but it's normally whatever way to do, you need time to get that ready before the Barnes and Noble contract expires. And if you want that to lead into it, um, our contract will be able to lead you back to that. Um, so, things like that, so that would be important. Um, a last comment would be, just again, about administrator evaluations. We still do not have a way for faculty to give feedback to their direct supervisor or any other administrator in an anonymous and systematic way. This lack of opportunity leads to a myriad of problems. Students or supervisors are unable to address issues, it's hard to determine what are, why are the rights concerned, and there is no opportunity for improvement. We are frustrated and disappointed. I'm also frustrated that there doesn't seem to be much follow-up on this issue, um, and so we will have over two, there being progress in that area. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if you, this, my last, this is for you again, I, I miss something.
So we came to the Board of Trustees and asked other administrator about it. There's still a bit of pressure.
Yeah, and, and so you, you presented it, we don't do that, you didn't present it to the HR.
We talked to HR, they've come and given us a listening session, and there hasn't been anything to say. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm like, I appreciate the issues, if you aren't for noble, I mean, I don't know, they're like, so that's
Yeah.
This is, this is here.
It was, there was some other interesting things that I was surprised we couldn't answer, to be honest. We asked if students would be able to access the textbook offline, so that might help some of it, they didn't seem to know. Um, they said, I mean, you know, V to learn the management system, which is slides that they have, the slides that they have to be online, but the fact that they couldn't definitively say yes or no is kind of weird. And then, another thing is, it would incorporate any online homework system that we use. And when I asked about incorporation of the grade book, so, assuming you have a, like, a bookshelf in campus, you would click on it, you know, whatever. Um, right now, faculty members can choose whether they want the grade book to be integrated, I was going to say. So essentially, you can link it up to whatever excellent publisher you have, and it's ready to automatically get you. But the success of that, it depends on what they hear you think. So some integrate very well, the scores are updated correctly, some are not. So faculty are interested in whether that would be happening, and whether that would be for some or not. Um, I love that, the other thing that was quite interesting was they continued to use, um, what was it, St. Martin's as their fake example? Which is a private school in Tacoma, and it is not anything like us. So we finally asked them about using that as an interview book, and they didn't have an example that was more like us, particularly with the veterans population, then interesting.
So they, they, they brought this, they could have made a deal to, with a number of community colleges.
Well, I think so far, as far as I know, anybody can correct it and write, as far as I know, we're the only students that are as far into the process as we are, and I don't think anybody else is quite in this position, but I don't, I don't know.
But they backed off the, you know, taking a risk.
Well, that's because people knew they shouldn't have.
Okay, but, but we have another, I, I have a different point as I was going, but you have another year of people.
Yeah, but that's because they couldn't integrate, you know, discipline, it's not because they don't want to do this. And in fact, they, from what I can tell, they, they said that in a faculty meeting, and that was news to everyone in the meeting, they hadn't used it.
Well, they should just put it in the hands, of course, for the state. Done. Get a lot of, yeah.
I don't think I have a simple answer today, because, I can have a book, but I won't say anything. Um, I, I do have to say, it was one time where I was grateful that
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the combined administrative board to the Board of Trustees. President Kavuzi, you got one second with people who are board?
I'd like, um, for the, the detailed, uh, comments, and, uh, for, you know, again, there's a, the first time I've met this in favor, so we're going to pick something else. We're, um, in a process of finalizing the timeline of who's doing what and who the states are, so we'll get that out of college soon.
Any questions for, that we've got?
No.
Yeah, Mr. Morris, anyone initially reporting of his own? By the way, I asked that in my speech about fiction. Every time I think about you, you're setting a table. Got to be quite an event. Okay, Mr. Gafford, do you have anything?
The first thing I forgot to say was thank you to the foundation for the hosty squag that that I gave to the newly-tenured faculty. I think I told the foundation for those. I would like to offer my congratulations to the faculty who were in tenure today. Burning tenure is among the most important milestones, but not the most important in the career of a full-time faculty. And I will say that having been faculty, there aren't a lot of milestones. It's important to sort of celebrate this, and from here on, there's a lot of deepening the practice of being a faculty member and also building, you know, a career of the institution, of service to students. But I'd want to make sure that we celebrate. And just saying that each of these faculty members is followed a thorough yearly three-year process that includes extensive professional development, self-peer review, many evaluations, observation, teaching, student evaluation, teaching, a lot goes into it. Faculty are at the heart of our mission to offer quality education to support so students achieve their educational goals, career value, teaching and discipline in programs like the ones represented today, computer science, medical setting, they were saying, attract students to OC, and just as important, they keep those students here. So we look forward to the careers of professors, ladies, Juan, and Arden, and celebrate with them their achievement and their commitment to student learning success. So finally, I wanted to express gratitude for the opportunity to be part of the team that attended the A D D Dream Conference last week. Hearing from community colleges across the country, and I want to say that they said there were about twenty-five hundred people there from colleges, not just across the country, actually across the world. But hearing from all of them about their efforts to close equity gas, streamline and expand halfway, and build economic opportunity for students and graduates was everything, catalyzing and overwhelming. And I'm looking forward to deep reading, discussing, and implementing much of our in-depth knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you, Warren.
Is there something to report?
No, maybe I'll teach you.
Is there anyone from the expected emptying with the national body ready to report this one? If they would like to share. Trustee, is there any further questions? Okay, moving on, there's going to be no additional executive session this evening. Who's going to join us? I think I actually should be good to be with. There is no items, leaving the panel adjourned.